Finance meeting, if the clerk could call the roll.
Counselors Kadim, Dionne.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Ponti.
Here.
Raposo.
Here.
Sampson.
Here.
President Camaro and Vice President Pereira.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizen input. The citizen input is three minutes per person. Sometimes the council will say something, but sometimes they don't. Because citizen input is for the citizens to be able to come and give us input. So don't think that we're not listening to what you're saying. We are, but those are the rules. The first one that signed up, Christopher Carlos? Carlo?
Conlon.
Conlon, on 73 Brownell Street, Fall River. Come on down. Yes, citizen input time is held before finance and after, for whatever you want to speak about. Have a seat and speak into the microphone.
I appreciate you. That's the first timer here, you know what I mean?
Run for council.
So I just want to speak on behalf of like the homelessness ordinance that's supposed to be an issue today, right? And so as a gentleman who's been homeless in the city of Fall River for about two and a half years, right, on and off, stints in different facilities and different shelters, you know what I mean? So I've been boots on the ground for a long time here with these people. And as far as like it being an ordinance to like, as far as I understand, I don't know the facts in particulars about it, but you know, fining people for having outside camping equipment, taking and confiscating tents and things like that, all it's going to do is perpetuate people into a state of fear. When people in a state of fear, right, when the man comes down and wants to take whatever little bit that they have of their dignity, or place or shelter, and like that, you know, all it's going to do is inhibit them from a new experience. And only through a new experience of being in a safe place, right, feeling welcome by their community, not shunned for the situation they might be in because they're just circumstances. These individuals, right, they're sick and suffering, right? Whatever the case may be, they fall on hard times, they could have drug addiction or mental health issues, right? I would not have the same contempt for somebody who had cancer or heart disease. For people that are just, you know, down and out. And it's only in a safe environment, right, lacks of like this ordinance to make them feel more shameful, or adopt these labels of guilt and shame because of like their community shunning them. We need to make them feel more safe and more open to a new experience, to get them back involved in community, right? That's the only way we're going to solve the problem. Pushing these people out and fining them. I know, I got holes in my shoes. I've been walking around for three days when it rained, with wet socks, dirty socks, feet soaking wet, going to different programs, going to different community meals, right, with these people. And I know that from my own experience, and that's the only thing I can speak of, is only from having a safe environment for them. Then they are uninhibited by fear, which shuts us off from a new experience, right? God let me forget what I think I know so I can have a new experience. And the new experience isn't fining people for this stuff. It's not taking their tents or forcing them into a state in which they don't want to exist, right? Because all you're doing is you're just making the problem worse, I feel like. I feel like if we could just, you know, as a community, come together, open up our doors a little bit, open up our hearts, and be open to these individuals as I am, right, talking with them, because they're just people. Everybody is somebody's somebody, and you can't treat people like that. I mean, I wouldn't want to be treated like that, because all I'm going to do is rebel against you if you do do that. And that's not going to solve the problem. Solving the problem is making a safer place for them, opening up, building more shelters. Because it's only through a safe environment, people are open to a new experience, unencumbered by fear, and I've witnessed it with my own eyes.
Fifteen more seconds.
So that's really all I have to say. And I've developed a rapport with a lot of the people in the city of Fall River, as far as like the homeless go. And I shot heroin for 15 years, five years, abstaining from all opiates on Valentine's Day. I was of the hopeless for a ride, you know what I mean? And when I got down to a situation that was not my own fault, that was not of my making, right, I suffered a traumatic brain injury, and I realized that what was going on around me when I got down to the level of being homeless and having nothing, right, that what the real problem was. And it was only from sharing in the experience, walking around throughout the night, in the freezing cold to stay warm, and then during the day trying to find somewhere where I could get enough rest and peace of mind to think clear enough to fix my own situation. But I didn't have that, right? Not a lot of people do. Not a lot of people have, you know, I don't know, they let them circumstances get down because they're stigmatized and they're judged by a community that should open up their arms and should want to help them and not shun them, because everybody's somebody's somebody, and everybody deserves to feel like they're worth their trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Conlon.
Thank you.
Next up is Kelly Buchanan, Bradford Avenue.
Good evening, guys. You know I am here. I'm pro for the ordinance, and I hope that we have the votes tonight to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Reverend James Hornsby, Lake Avenue.
Reverend Jay Maddox.
No, it's not. Council Vice President. Is that a Fall River address?
Yes.
Thank you.
Reverend Jim Hornsby, 260 Lake Avenue, Fall River. Thank you for the time. I'm opposed to the proposed ordinance. Please vote it down. Arrest, jail, removal, possible criminal record, fining people for money when they don't have any, it all sounds rather primitive. This is the 21st century, where people, human beings, are homeless, provide a home. When folks are in need of treatment for physical health problems, see a doctor. When folks are addicted, provide detox, provide also long-term residential treatment. When people need support, reach out and provide support and love and hope. In my experience as a social worker, as a clergyman at St. Luke's Church, as a board member of United End of Faith Action, it's my opinion that we need to reach out with healing, not with punishment. Thank you. Any questions are welcome.
Thank you, Reverend Hornsby. Next to speak is Sarah Mayers, from Somerville, Massachusetts, so we'll need...
Motion to waive the rule.
Second. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hello. It's good to see you guys again. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, I live a little ways away, and I come here, and I take care of our patients who are homeless at Star, and I take care of them on the mobile van at places around the city. And it's been special for me to work in Fall River, because one thing that has stood out for me is the compassion that this city shows its residents even when they're homeless. And I've been really proud to be a part of this, and for my patients to say, hey, the mayor checked in on me in my encampment. There's very few cities that can say that. I've been so proud watching my patients go to the, go through the sober housing grant, and to see Fall River leading in the state in terms of effective responses to homelessness. I'm urging city council to continue on this path of effective and compassionate efforts against homelessness, and therefore I'm opposed to this ordinance. Plenty of places have passed these ordinance. They all still have people who are homeless. There is no evidence that it's effective. There's evidence that it is cruel when there are no shelter beds for people to go to. What fixes homelessness is housing. Some people need sober housing. We're doing great at that. Some people need affordable housing, senior housing. Some people need permanent supportive housing. They do not have the cognitive or mental health function to manage an apartment on their own. They need a caseworker. They need support. They need just a little room, some meals. I just want to encourage the city to continue on the good path it has been on towards effective and compassionate treatments, and not to be led astray by the sort of social winds towards window dressing, but harmful solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next is Ken Rigo, 2000 Bay Street on Housing.
How you doing, counselors?
How you doing?
Your time. I'm really trying to contribute to my city, this city, our city, that we live in, the best we can. I've been talking years on certain platforms about the tiny house program.
Sir.
Mr. Rigo, can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. You can't hear me?
Have a seat, and that way you're closer to the microphone.
There you go. Good job.
I thought the mic would pick that up, but I guess not.
There you go.
All right. Yeah, just, I just believe that there's some kind of gentrification going on in our city, where we're putting rents so high, it's making it untainable for people to even have that American dream, never mind afford an apartment in our community. And you look at what happened in South Boston, the gentrification in South Boston. I've been saying this for years, where we need solutions. And then California, you know, some things I don't agree with what California does, but it makes a thing for where we can improve our circumstances. Having entrepreneurs set up pieces of land and put tiny houses, a tiny house community for veterans. I know there was talk of it last time you guys met, last city council meeting. I wasn't able to attend that due to health reasons. But I think there is solutions. I don't think, I know there is solutions. We just have to try to work together in the middle, in our city, and not make everything so political, and worry more about the people. And what, something that just popped into my mind, where I thought we had this discussion about the marijuana and the tax money to allocate this. Why isn't the marijuana tax money being used for the infrastructure, the housing, the needs that this city has? I thought that what this marijuana tax money was supposed to do was alleviate the burdens, the rents. All of this stuff we're talking about, the homelessness, that it was supposed to alleviate this. And all I see is people getting poorer. People that are even making six figures can't get ahead. They're crying at the taxes. It's like, I thought I was going to be able to afford a home in this city. There's no way. Even with a Section 8 voucher and a HUD certificate, you can't afford, because then you have your electric. Now, the rents are so high, where this Section 8 Home Choice voucher only covers a certain portion of the rent. So, okay, let's try to, you know, take that in perspective. And hey, can I buy a house with this? Okay. Oh, well, it affords you whatever that subsidy is going to cover with the FSS program, with the Fall River Housing Authority. So, and the Fall River Housing Authority is strapped at its own lens. And I feel bad for the people that, you know, live in the housing and that have to run the Fall River Housing Authority due to the housing crisis. I think we need to put priority, like I said before, on the veterans, the people that are disabled, and the people that are from our town, our city, and even, not from the area, but from the country itself, like I said last time. And I'll make this clear, like, we need to all work together and put this tribalism, this indifference that we've had in the past with the politics, and start taking care of the people of our country and our city. We need to do our city and our country first. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Rigo. Next is James Medley from South Almond Street. Excuse me, are you from Norton, Mass?
That's me.
No, okay. Go ahead.
I'm from Fall River.
Fall River.
I'm not actually from Fall River, but I live in Fall River.
We'd have to waive the rules for you to speak.
I'm in, I live in Fall River.
No, we don't have to.
We don't have to.
I'm not from Fall River, as you can probably tell. Thank you, counselors, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm here to speak about the ordinance that criminalizes outside camping, unauthorized camping.
Just a minute. Counselor Dionne?
Okay. Can we please put this to rest? Non-criminal procedures. There's nothing criminal within this ordinance. Non-criminal. Nobody's going to jail. Nobody's getting a fine. Nobody's going to have something held against them on their record. It's non-criminal.
Well, ma'am, the way I read the ordinance, and forgive me, I am not an expert in law, but the way I read the ordinance is that there are fines, and there are three criteria that have to be met to not be fined. If you're homeless, if you, if shelter is not available, and if you do not immediately say that you will go to shelter when room is available.
Pardon, clarification?
Counselor Kilby.
Yes, a fine is not criminal. A fine is civil.
Okay.
So it's, that, thank you, Counselor Dionne, for clarifying that. There's nothing criminal in this ordinance. But every ordinance where you're asking, you're requesting someone to make a tough decision, there has to be an enforcement mechanism, or no one's going to obey it. There has to be. So it's not criminal.
All right. Forgive me for misspeaking.
There are steps that have to be followed in order for the fine to be instituted. So many steps.
And what happens?
Many options, many opportunities to try to help. That's, and I think that's a missing point. We're trying to help people. That's my, I think we're trying to help. I know it's citizen's input, Madam President, thank you.
No, that's all right. I'm fine.
Your patience, I yield.
Counselor Sampson.
No, I think we should let him finish his point, because there are some valid concerns, so I think that you should.
Go ahead. Mr. Medley, you may continue.
Forgive me for misspeaking.
That's okay.
Saying criminalized. But face reading of the ordinance, to me, and again, I'm not an expert in the law, but reading the ordinance, it's not say criminalize homelessness, but outlaw homelessness. And it's, this is an ordinance that, again, in just my opinion, is that you're trying, we're trying to hide the problem and not address the problem. If people don't have a place to stay, if they don't have the money to go to a hotel, if the shelters are full, or if the shelters won't take someone because they happen to be an addict, and are currently an addict, you're just hiding the problem. We're not trying to fix the root causes of homelessness. More shelter, affordable housing, as the gentleman before me said. Places where we can have compassion and empathy and kindness. This ordinance, again, to me, does not strike me as compassionate, kind, or empathy, or empathetic. I would urge the council not to pass it. I am a citizen of Fall River, obviously, though I'm not from here originally. But it's a beautiful city, a beautiful place to live. I like being here, but I think we could be more compassionate in this area, and not try to hide a problem. We need to address the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Jamie Springer. Jamie?
It's me, Janice.
You are from Norton, so...
Motion to waive the rules.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm the Reverend Jamie Spriggs. I'm the pastor of the First Baptist Church of Fall River. We feed about 12,000 meals a year in this community. We have a clothing ministry. We have a homeless ministry. Some of those tents and tarps come from us. I love this community and our people. And I'm going to say, I don't want there to be homeless encampments outside either. I don't want there to be places where people have to live without shelter, without running water, without sanitation. I agree that those things are problems. And I'm going to say something that the mayor probably hasn't heard me say very often, which is, Mayor Coogan is right that Fall River shouldn't have to bear the burden of this, of the problem that we have in our region by itself. I agree. But there are initiatives that are going on, and on a regional level, to try to address the homeless problem, and we haven't participated in them. This thing that we are trying to do, to fine homeless people who then won't be able to pay those fines, and what happens when you can't pay your fine? More fines? What happens when you can't pay those fines? Is there a jail at the end of this somewhere? This might not be an immediate criminalization of homelessness, but it creates all of the fear that would come along with a criminalization of homelessness. Here is what I want to say. It won't be effective. It won't accomplish the thing that you're trying to accomplish, which is to make there not be these encampments. Do you know what works? The creation of affordable housing. Do you know what works? Tracing people not anonymously, but by name. Do you know what works? Not having dispersed services in 10 different places that people have to check in with, but having a unified structure to handle cases of folks who are homeless. I want to end homelessness in Fall River. Most of my homeless friends here want to end homelessness in Fall River. But this is not the way to do it. This is only cruel. And you're not cruel people. The mayor isn't a cruel man. He has showed up to work at our homeless shelter, at our overflow shelter, when he didn't have to, put on jeans and work the shift. No one here is looking for someone to die this winter. And I am telling you that if you pass this ordinance in September, when it is getting colder, people are going to die. And it will be on your shoulders. At the end of time, forgive me, I'm a Baptist pastor, you're going to get a couple seconds of gospel, I apologize. At the end of time, when Jesus comes in glory and separates people on one side and the other, he's going to look at one side and say, you took care of me. You fed me, you clothed me, you took care of me. And they're going to say, Lord, when did we do that for you? And he's going to say, when you did it, for the least of these. For those of you who have faith, please trust me that we are supposed to be caring for and loving these people, not punishing them. No one can be punished out of the circumstances that they're in. But they can be helped. Let's put this ordinance aside and work together to help them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to speak is Paul Haru, from Attleboro.
Motion to waive the rules.
He is also the sheriff of Bristol County.
Second.
Welcome, Sheriff.
Good evening to this honorable body, and Mr. Mayor, it's nice to see you again. This ordinance I am opposed to. And let me tease out something that Ms. Spriggs just talked about. So while this ordinance may not be criminalizing homelessness, the way it works and unfolds, and the way it ends up being more inmates in my jail, which is, I don't think what anybody wants, is that when fines are placed on someone, the fines have to be paid. If they're not paid, the city then is going to be faced with the obligation to either enforce those with the courts, or to say, okay, we're going to issue fines, but they don't really mean anything. Now, if they say it doesn't really mean anything, what's the point of doing this? But if they want to go the route of the court, where you're going to say, okay, we're going to get the person to pay the fines to the courts, okay, how do you get blood from a stone? You're going to then force the courts to say, you need to pay these fines, or you're in contempt of court. If you're in contempt of court, and you still can't pay the fines, where do you go? You come to my place, the jail, which I don't want to see. Because now what we're doing is we're taking people who were previously homeless, and had a really hard time getting a job, getting housing, getting their health care, and now you've added a criminal record to them, because now they've been sentenced for violating a court order to pay the fines that were imposed by this ordinance. We don't want that. I don't think anybody wants that. I used to be mayor of Attleboro. Fall River is the second largest municipality in the county. But when I was mayor of Attleboro, I dealt with a lot of homelessness as well, when we were actually building a homeless shelter there. When I was a state representative for five years before I was mayor, I personally drove people to homeless shelters. It's an issue that I've dealt with for a long time. There are some solutions, though. The state just passed a several billion dollar housing bond bill. That's something that this community could tap as a way to help build additional resources. I'm willing to work with the municipality, like the Fall River, and any municipality for that matter. for that matter, to help with the placement of people, you know, using some of our resources to help place people with housing, health care, and a job. There's, you know, I want you to, I have, time is limited, I, how much time do I have?
Three minutes, you have another minute.
Okay, great, give a politician a microphone, they'll talk forever if you let them, so, I'm a politician, so I'll admit that. But the, but visualize this for a moment, though. Visualize that this ordinance passes, and then you are asking the police officers to go and issue fines for people who are already down on their luck. Now you've said, "Okay, here's a fine." Now, the police officer doesn't wanna do that, the police officer also, you know, we wanna actually have better relations, police and the public wanna have better relations. In Attleboro, what we had was a problem-oriented policing unit, which I don't know if we have one here in Fall River.
Yes, we do.
Very good. So the pop team in Attleboro would address issues like this, rather than using a fine. So between, you know, using a pop team, between using the housing bond bill, between my willingness to partner with the city of Fall River, and any of the other 19 municipalities in the county, I think there are other solutions we can pursue, rather than doing this, which is a slippery slope to having more people in my jail, which I don't think anybody wants. Happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Sheriff Haru. Counselor Kilby?
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Really quick, nope, really quick since you're here.
Yes, sir.
What resources do you have? And have, has your office been in contact with the administration to try to relieve this problem?
Well, one of the issues.
That's the only question.
Yeah, so, I'll start with the first one, the, actually, we'll go backwards. The mayor and I met many months ago, I forgot, it was over, maybe even a year ago, but we are providing lists of people who are being released from the jail back into Fall River, so, and we assume that if somebody's last known address is Fall River, they're likely to go back to Fall River. So the classification unit provides that list to the city, and then, I'm not sure what the mayor does with that list, but I believe he takes action to try and make, you know, some type of accommodations. So that's one thing that we've done already, you know, just to let you know who's coming back in, because when you're coming back into society, risk of homelessness is a problem, especially for people who have been locked up, they've lost contact with their family, lost contact with their friends. As far as resources, I created a post-release unit, a post-release unit, before I got there, there was about four people dedicated to housing, health care, and a job, for the pillars of prisoner reentry, there was about four people, now there's about 20. And those four people were spread really thin, they were doing all of those things, plus providing transportation and getting IDs, they were, it is, you know, but I organized that better. So what we have are, like a professional staff of post-release workers, you can think of them as like caseworkers, and what they're doing is they're working with inmates directly to provide housing, health care, and a job before their inmates are released back into society. What I'm gonna be doing, when I close Ash Street Jail, I'm actually gonna take the Civil Building, actually, I'm gonna do this before I close Ash Street, but I'll be turning that into a homeless shelter of some sort for former inmates. And I have the resources where I could also have an office here in Fall River, which I'd be willing to do, we just have to, you know, coming up with the funding, it's a lot easier at the state level than it is at the municipal level, I know the challenges you face as a, as a mayor. But, you know, that, that staff that's dedicated to housing, health care, and a job, and health care includes mental health and substance abuse, we can use them to hit the ground running, to help your population here in Fall River, I mean, your constituents are my constituents, the same people that vote for you vote for me as well. So these are things, like I said, it's three different things we can, you know, willingness to partner with Fall River, there's the housing bond bill, and there's a problem-oriented policing, you know, a little bit of creativity and a little bit of caring, we can solve a lot of problems.
Thank you, I take a regional, a regional approach would be, would be a great thing.
Yeah, if this passes, it'll push people to other communities.
Better chance of getting all that funding. I yield, thank you.
You yield, Counselor Kilby, Counselor Sampson.
I just wanna say thank you for coming down, it's a relief to have someone come down and have some actual assistance that they could offer, it's really refreshing, and I appreciate you for coming down and sharing that with us, thank you.
Yeah, this is a great city with a great mayor, great council, and, you know, like I said, a little bit of creativity and a little bit of caring, you can solve a lot of problems, but there is that $3 billion, I think it's $3 billion dollar bond bill that the legislature just passed, talk to your state reps and state senators, see if some of that can be used for, like homeless shelter, certainly affordable housing, I know that's certainly possible.
Thank you, Sheriff Haru.
Thank you, folks.
Probably, we'll have to call Sheriff Haru to come down when you have a housing subcommittee meeting, maybe he can shed some light on stuff. The next one to speak is Dawn Kuchinicki, and she is from Fall River Norfolk Street.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm opposed to the ordinance.
Could you speak into the microphone, Dawn?
I'm opposed to the ordinance, I did some research last night, and I wrote some notes down, and homelessness and inadequate housing directly impacts on inequalities, health, education, and the life chances of current and future generations. Homelessness should be rare, brief, and unrepeated. Smaller homes are needed for the many single people experiencing homelessness, along with larger homes for extended families, and more homes are needed that better meet the needs of disabled people. Not just homes, but jobs and training opportunities, and what I mean about homes, vacant apartments that are around the city, and people feel uncomfortable and scared. If you want to serve us, help us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Next one is John Sylvia, Fall River, on housing.
Okay, I'm probably in the minority here, I'm on the opposite side of this. We all know that there have been issues with people on Bay Street, I live near Brayton Avenue, there were issues there, it was cleaned up, I understand we have this, but there's gonna be a happy medium with this. We have to look at, really, it's a national problem, so we have had 10 million people walk into this country in the last four years, supply and demand, what do you think's gonna happen with housing? It goes up. So what I would like to see is, including the mayor, all of you guys, when these people come down, like the governor, this one, that one, say, "Look, we have a problem here." And by you paying thousands of dollars, we have some folks there that are homeless, right? We have a hotel, a whole hotel in Taunton that is housing people that are not supposed to be here. So why aren't we holding their feet to the fire and saying, "Look, something's gotta give here." And I don't, what I would like to see, too, is these nonprofit agencies, I'd like to see them holding Elizabeth Warren's feet to the fire, the governor's feet to the fire, and Akin Klos, when they come down here, tell them there's an issue here, because there are people on the other side, that there are issues that folks are stealing from them in their yard, it's, it's, there's no happy medium to it, but I, I'm just so incensed with, when are we all gonna figure out, 10 million people walked in here, and they're being taken care of, and Americans aren't? And when are we gonna start doing something about it? We have a party in, that's the Democratic Party right now, if we have people that are in office in this chamber that are Democrats, you need to say, "I'm a Democrat, let's step up and fix this situation." That's what I think needs to happen, and it's a shame that we had not been able to build a building to house people, because we know we have a big drug problem here, I have an acquaintance that just passed away, 47 years old, the other day, it's a big problem, we know it's a big problem, why are we letting them live on the street? It's inhumane, but, again, we have to look at this from a union, from a national thing. I think this is great, the mayor goes out to see the homeless, but the homeless, I'm sure, would rather have a home than seeing the mayor. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia.
There's no other citizen input. Item two on the agenda was to convene with representatives from various utility companies to provide information regarding the process of installing and removing or relocating utility poles with the city, and the delays that may affect the timeline of the process. However, the clerk did receive two emails from Verizon, who were unable to be here this evening, but we do have a gentleman who is here from National Grid.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
There was a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, concludes.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this concludes the finance committee, but the mayor is here, and also from the council, we have a citation to a very dear gentleman, Jim Sewell.
Madam clerk.
If Connie could come down.
You have to open, you have to open the full council meeting, Madam clerk.
Well, we'll do it now, huh?
You have to open the full council.
Open full council. I was gonna sneak this right in there, Cliffy. Clerk, call the roll.
Counselors Kadine, Dionne.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Ponti.
Here.
Reposo.
Yep.
Sampson.
Here.
President Kamara, and Vice President Pereira.
Here. Here. We stand for a moment of silent prayer, and maybe on this night, we can all think of our friend Jim Sewell. We stand for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings and transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion to take item number eight out of order.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt.
The second.
Obviously, Fall River lost a great resident, someone they gave back to the community day in, day out. I usually see him in the morning up at Jimmy Sewell's place, and we'd argue about something and laugh about something else, but Jim Sewell did a lot for this community, he put us on a solid footing, he's the kind of resident we want in Fall River of all time. We've lost him, it's regretful. I did want to tell Connie and the, I don't know if her kids are here or not, in honor and recognition of his lifetime dedication to the betterment of our city, the citizens, we offer our deepest condolences to Jim Sewell and his family. I'm so sorry.
As the former president of the Preservation Society of Fall River, who contributes to the city, his range worked from Doormats, nonprofit preservation society, helping to establish the first Fall River Protected Local Historic District, I remember working with him on that, and advocating for the creation of a community preservation committee. I remember him and Aunt Lima and I working on that, and his commitment to the city of Fall River will forever be present in our hearts and minds. This is a resolution from the entire city council, and be resolved that the former city council hereby stands in solemn remembrance for a moment of silent prayer, which we did, and that the resolution be entered into the records of the city council. He was one in a million.
Yes, he was.
Your calm before the storm. I saw him singing "Happy Birthday" on Facebook, and I just had to, like, play it a couple of times, brought a tear to my eye, but what a great memory for your daughter. Thank you so much. The regular council meeting will begin at 7:00. Do you need a break?
No.
So we can just go right into it?
We're already in it.
Number one, Madam Clerk.
Would it be appropriate, Madam Clerk, to adopt the order that was taken out of order at that time? Motion to adopt the resolution, be appropriate, item eight?
Second.
Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, item number one.
Item number one is a communication from the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointments to the cultural council, we have David Mello.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the item one B would be the confirmation of Christine Nicole Pelletier Southgate.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item two are recommendations from the traffic commission recommending amendments to the ordinances.
Refer to the committee on ordinances.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have the submission from the special charter review committee, their report of the charter.
Motion to.
For finance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For second reading and enrollment, we have a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item five would be for passage through second reading and enrollment as well, this is the membership of the historical commission.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item six for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended, we have the proposed trolley fees.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Upstain.
Whereas beginning in 2016, the town of Westport began accruing overdue balances owed to the city of Fall River related to South Wataupa Pond water use due to submitting only partial payments, and whereas beginning in 2020, the town of Westport resumed paying current bills in full, but had accrued debt for the partial payments from the previous four years, and whereas the city of Fall River has developed a payment plan with the town of Westport to remedy these overdue balances, now therefore be it resolved that the committee on finance convene with the city administrator and the administrator of public utilities to discuss the current status of the overdue balance and provide information regarding the plan to collect the remaining debt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Have the police chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have the Fall River Public Library's annual report.
Motion accepted, placed on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 12 is a request for a structure over a public way on behalf of Greater Fall River Recreation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have minutes of the committee on finance held on September 10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have minutes of the regular meeting of the city council held on September 10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The committee on ordinances and legislation at a meeting held on September 19 voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance accompanied by an emergency preamble be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Counselor Hart, absent and not voting, this is a handicapped parking ordinance.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble.
Second.
Roll call.
On the motion, excuse me, to adopt the preamble, Counselors Kadine, Dionne.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
Ponti.
Yes.
Reposo.
Yes.
Sampson.
Yes.
President Kamara, and Vice President Pereira.
Yes.
Motion to pass for all readings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Committee on ordinances and legislation at a meeting held on September 19 voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance accompanied by an emergency preamble be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Counselor Hart, absent and not voting, this is the ordinance relating to unauthorized camping on public property.
Counselor Sampson.
I just need to speak on this, I don't know if I'd do it after the.
You can go ahead.
So, I cannot support this, and I'm gonna explain why. We have no overflow shelter yet, so we're gonna move these camps, we have nowhere to put these people, they're just gonna go camp somewhere else, in the city, they're gonna be in doorways. The city shelter, a resident spoke, we need to put it back on these nonprofits, we have a shelter that has 30 beds, are not at capacity, we have nowhere to put these people, we have land from the Wataupa Heights, that's in court, we have to look at that, and he's right, there are 10 million people in the United States of America that are in hotels and shelters, and it's.
that are in hotels and shelters and it's our people that are in these camps. And we talk a lot about, you know, people being drug addicts and mental health, but not everybody in these camps are drug addicts and mental health people and they are. And we just don't have a place and we're going to keep pushing them. I believe we need this ordinance, but I also believe that we need to put some work behind it and get some solutions before we approve this ordinance. In my world, there's a slogan, sometimes you have to go slow before you go fast. So we need to take a look at this, do it properly, or we're just going to continue to move people around. I am probably in the minority here, but I can't in good conscience move people out of these camps, move them with nowhere to put them. And there is nowhere to put these people. And so until we find a solution and we work, we had, you know, grateful that the sheriff came down and is offering some assistance in hearing this $3 billion bond bill that we could maybe tap into, but we desperately need places to put our people. And we need to put the pressure on the places that are in our community that are not at full capacity, that are receiving this funding. So I cannot support this. I am a citizen of Fall River. I do not like to see our people homeless. It's not safe, but what are we, we're just going to move them. We see that happening in our sister communities. We see in New Bedford. They go in there, they take down a camp and guess what? It pops up somewhere else. We're just going to keep shuffling. And then when they go to, the caseworkers go and look for these people, they're not at that camp and they got to go disperse around the city. It's just, we've got to go slow to go fast here. This ordinance needs to happen. I don't feel that we need to rush into it right now. We need to rush into finding housing and solutions and looking at some of these things that we talked about tonight. So with that a yield, that's just going to be where I stand with this.
Council Dionne.
So, we've been a couple of years already, minimum, a couple of years working at this. Some progress has been made. Not enough, obviously. I agree, we need the, we need housing. People in the city, there are cer, some people in the city don't like to hear the word affordable housing. We need it, absolutely. We do have Wataupa. In my world, if it was a perfect world, we'd have 100 tiny houses on the property in Wataupa and everybody in the encampments would be in the tiny houses. We have the bathrooms, the showers, the laundry facilities. We could put a, we could put another trailer there with all the services. Everybody would be in one spot. They'd be protected. They'd be centrally located. It would be transitional. It's something that can be done. I'm sure we could work with the state if the state is so concerned about human beings and their welfare. At the same token, whether you vote yes or vote no, somebody's not going to be happy. I get that. But you know what? That's, that's not the situation. That's not what you have to worry about. I feel, as a city councillor, I have an obligation not only to the homeless people, but to the people who are affected by the encampments. You know, it's not their fault either. And nobody can say that nothing bad ever happens. Nobody can say there haven't been problems. Nobody can say there wasn't a fire in an encampment. And I'm not trying to be mean to people. And believe me, I have compassion for the people who are in there. I know people who are in there personally. But I don't think we can just sit idle because I feel like the longer we have sat idle, the longer it goes on. And we never had anybody come down here and say, we can offer a solution. Never had, never had a sheriff come down here and say, oh, I can give you an option on housing until this ordinance came up. So guess what? It already had an effect. It already had an effect. People are now finally starting to think. People are talking more about ways to house these people. So if that's what this ordinance does, I'm all for it. To help these people, get them out of the encampments, put them in a safer place, and make our community a safer and a better place.
Do you yield, Council Dionne?
With that, I yield.
Council Kilby.
Yes. I 100% agree with Council Dionne. We have to get something. Some legislation, ordinance, passed. It's got to get on the books. And I stated to my colleagues at least 10 times privately that the lost message here is we're trying to help. We're trying to help these people. And I don't even like saying these people. We like, we're trying to help these human beings. That's the lost message. We have to do something. We have to act. And the reason I asked the sheriff a question in terms of resources, in terms of, you know, has he reached out to the administration? Well, I'm glad he came down. First time I met him, I'm very happy he came down. This definitely requires a regional approach. New Bedford, Fall River, Taunton, Attleboro, there has to be a task force put together. We pass this ordinance and of course, we have to provide for people. But I'll tell you, living in a tent when winter's approaching is not a pleasant thing. And I'm sure all the clergy will agree with me. That is not fun. So the ordinance should be passed. And the thing is, the ordinance is like, not like the Ten Commandments edged in stone. We can revisit this ordinance so many times. And as an attorney, I've been to court many times. And you know something? A judge will give an individual every single benefit of the doubt for years, years, as long as he sees that person helping him or herself. So please, let's get this on the books. People have been waiting and I'm sympathetic to the neighbors, but we have to do something. We have a responsibility to act and to help. Thank you.
You yield, Council Kilby.
Yes.
Council Ponte.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I've been pretty quiet on this issue for, for some time. And I have been because I'm trying to listen to both sides of everybody's position and argument. And as elected leaders and as a legislative body, it's our responsibility to listen to what people have to say and then make a decision on what we think is best for the people who elect us to sit in these seats. And if for some reason the people don't like the decisions that we make, they don't elect us again. That's just the reality of where we are as city councillors. Number one. Number two, perfect is the enemy of good. We are never going to be perfect at making this decision. This ordinance is never going to be perfect. We're not going to be able to help every person or every organization or any person who is struggling with homelessness. It's never going to happen, okay? I want to also say that Fall River has its share of issues. We have a homelessness problem, right? But if you compare Fall River to other gateway cities and other places in this state and across the country, you are not going to see it like it is elsewhere. I would suggest that you go to a place like Seattle, or I'd ask you to go to a place like Oregon, when outside of their city hall, people are living in tents. Okay? So in the airports in Boston and in other areas, we have a problem, but I think the, the, the city has a lot of resources that can get tapped into to help people. So let's not discredit the work that this city has done and has continued to do to try to help people. And the organizations that are here, the churches that are here, the pastors that are here, and the different organizations who are here who are nonprofit organizations have done a tremendous job in curbing the issue that we have here when, when there's been truckloads of people who have been dropped off in this community. Okay? So I wanted to make that comment. The other thing that we all have is, is, is we keep talking about last couple of meetings, Wataupa Heights. Let me just make one thing clear. The city council has no ability or no bargaining ability to do anything with Wataupa Heights. Okay? That needs to come from the Fall River Housing Authority. So if a councillor wants to file a resolution and invite the housing authority to come down to give us suggestions on what they're going to do with Wataupa Heights, maybe let's take a proactive step and do that. Because if tiny houses is a solution on the Wataupa Heights thing that is just sitting there with grass, you know, higher than six feet tall in some cases and not preserved and not taken care of, maybe that's what good will come out of it. So I'd be happy to be part of any kind of a resolution if any of my colleagues want to file it, to get the housing authority down here and give us solutions on what they're going to do with that. Okay? So if anybody wants to do it, if not, I'll file it myself. The other thing I wanted to say, two more things, three more things. Number one, I filed a resolution earlier in the year that I think is still sitting in the ordinance committee on the city of Fall River creating a housing fund for housing issues. And I know, with all due respect to my colleagues, it was met with some, with some resistance. Okay? I believe it's sitting in ordinance. I had his whole presentation. I gave my colleagues a whole packet of information. And it's no disrespect to the ordinance committee because you guys have been very, very busy, but maybe it's time to resurface that discussion and have the city put their money where their mouth is and it comes to housing. I said on this council floor when I filed that resolution that the city of Fall River should be putting money into housing development. And I said it and we're like, oh, we don't have the money. We can't afford it. We can't use ARPA. We can't use one-time money. We can't do that. I'm just telling you that there were a number of cities and towns that put money into a housing fund to start working on addressing housing. And we can do that here. All right? So I'm just going to also urge my colleagues and the people in the community to say, well, we want to say that we need more housing and we, and we say that we need more affordable housing. And yes, we do need more market rate housing. Okay, then let's get that out of the ordinance committee and let's stop talking about a mechanism with the administration on how we could start funding something like that. Right? That, these are examples of us trying to be proactive. This city and many other cities for many, many years, no disrespect to the administration or this council, we are a, a, a city that oftentimes makes decisions on, on pressure and we're not proactive in anything that we do. So we need to start doing that and housing is the start of that. And my last note I have here is this, if this does pass tonight and it passes through its necessary readings, we can amend this at any time. So if the mayor wants to come down or call the council president or vice president or speak to any one of us and say, listen, we're having a hard time enforcing this for a variety of reasons. This is creating a problem. This doesn't necessarily mean, like my colleague said, this isn't the Ten Commandments. Like this isn't, you know, we could, we can adjust this as a legislative body if we so need to. So I, I'll yield when it comes to that, but I just want to say, I'm not going to yield yet. I'm just going to say, nobody else has come down to us with solutions. They sit there and they look at us, which they should, because we're elected to make, create ideas and have solutions. But I can't find any other solution other than create more housing, put more money as, as a city if we can in housing so we can start slowly addressing these issues. That's where it begins. That's where it starts. So let's get the housing authority down here. Let's talk about Wataupa Heights. Let's get that resolution out of the ordinance committee to, for the city to invest in housing. And let's have serious debate about it instead of waiting for something like this to happen and say, we need more housing. Well, I told you that six months ago. We all know that. We all campaigned on it. We all had debates in forums. We need more housing. Let's go. Let's do it. Let's work. I yield.
You yield?
Yep, I yield, thank you.
Council Kilby. You're all set?
Yes, my points have been, have been made.
Council Sampson?
I just want to say a couple of things. We are talking about the, the agencies that come before us and I wanted to say the ones that come before us because they don't all come before us, but the ones that come before us are the experts, the ones that are serving, the church leaders there in their homeless camps, the outreach workers, STARS physicians that are out there. These are the experts. The experts are telling us that what happens around the nation when you just pick up and move these camps out of there, tell, because what's going to happen? We're going to pass this and, and they're going to assume that they're going to go in there and start knocking down these camps. And then there's no place to put these people. The experts are telling us we, there's nowhere to put them. It's going to make our job harder. We're making progress right now. And this ordinance is going to disrupt this process because what's going to happen is people are going to start calling and saying, these camps need to move, these people need to move, we need to move. And I have so much respect for my colleagues, all of them, but there are fires in people's homes. Yeah, there was a fire in a camp, but people's homes have fire. I mean, we heard from a gentleman tonight who was walking around. He, he's been sober five years and he can't, can't find a place to live and he's got, you know, his socks were wet for three days. That's heartbreaking. These are our people. These are our American citizens, American citizens who are in these camps who now we're saying that we have to displace. Yes, I can't agree thousand billion times more with that individual that came down here tonight and said, get to your Democratic leaders and say, you got it, we got a problem. But we do have a problem. And as long as I'm sitting here and we don't have a solution, although there are some, some good solutions, guess what? Our shelter needs to go to capacity. They're not there. Our overflow shelter, we need to get one. There's a solution. We need to look at this $3 billion bond bill. It's the first time I'm hearing about this. And the sheriff came down. So you know what? There are some solutions that are set before us, but to just throw an ordinance together as I go home to my warm house tonight and say, we can amend this bill, I can't sleep at night doing this. That we can throw these people out of their camps. We got no place to put them. Wherever they want to go, but they can't stay here. I can't sleep doing that. So as long as I'm here, that's my stance. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. I'm going to add a couple of my own feelings. And I believe going regional is something that we should be looking at. And if you think that we need more affordable housing, we have more affordable housing in the city of Fall River than we have in the towns. What does Somerset have? What does Swansea have? What does Westport have? What do they do with their homes? Everybody comes to the city. Everyone comes to Fall River. Everybody needs to step up to the plate and do something. I saw a lady at Kennedy Park who was from Dartmouth who lost her apartment and she was going to the shelter here, but they would only like, let her take one bag and she was getting rid of things. In the barrel and I told her, put it over here because GCM was coming. But Dartmouth doesn't have anything. You know what she said to me? Dartmouth doesn't have any homeless shelters for me, so I have to come to this dump of a city. And I thought to myself, this dump of a city? Obviously, she was stressed out. She lost her apartment. Maybe she didn't mean it, but we provide a lot of services to people that are homeless. I can name you a, a number of places. And you know, Council Sampson, all of the support that has been given. But we have to start somewhere. And is there a motion on the floor to adopt this emergency preamble?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
On the emergency preamble, Councilors Kadim, Dionne.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
Ponte.
Yes.
Repozo.
Yes.
Sampson.
No.
President Kamara.
Yes.
Excuse me, President Kamara and Vice President Pereira.
Motion to pass through all readings.
On the ordinance for passage through all readings.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay. Yep. We're going to take a brief recess to sign the order.
Back in session. Okay, last we have for passage through final ordination, we have the membership of the Historical Commission.
Motion to pass be ordained.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For final ordination, we have miscellaneous traffic.
Motion to be ordained.
Second.